Hi, thank you.
Yes. George.
Present.
Ahab, Jerk, Buckles.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Heber.
Here.
Hodgin. Here. Houston.
Present.
Alright, the first, well, I guess it's a public comment period, but we're gonna make a change of the agenda first, I think I can do that. We're gonna remove, uh, actually, we're gonna remove something too. So, we're gonna remove new business item three, the vote real estate transaction, that's just gone. And then I'm going to move up the approved union contract, uh, after presentations.
C, are you talking about after C?
C two.
C two.
C two, okay.
Yes, yeah, I guess it would be C two.
Okay, yeah. Oh, right.
Alright, okay, so, I know we just started. Um, Yvonne, have you got any, you got any public comment cards?
Uh, I did not get any online, no.
Okay. Well, we'll have a second one. I'll, I'll put it.
Me?
Yeah.
I'll wait till, I'm here for the union.
Yeah. Oh, okay, cool.
Awesome.
Okay, so.
I was just wondering if you were just. No, I'm here as you.
Cool, cool. Okay, so, uh.
You are now officially? Not yet, but I'm still, I started it off initially.
Awesome. Yeah. Okay, so, I guess, um, first, um, we'll have our presentation then from Renee Jettan, um, from West Coast Solar. And it's been, it's been a little bit, um, I sent out, um, uh, a letter that I mailed a while ago. Uh, but she can explain what she's, um, wanting to do. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, hi, my name's, uh, Renee Jettan, and I'm here to ask the Sheridan, uh, City Council if they want to partner with me for six megawatts of solar energy, uh, that I, I have twenty-five acres up in Gopher Valley that I'd like to put, uh, solar panels on. And, uh, as I've been talking to the Department of, uh, Energy and, uh, uh, the Energy Trust of Oregon and the Reef or Rural Energy for America program, um, they said that I need to partner with somebody. That I have to partner with a nonprofit, uh, like a, um, you know, government agency or something. And I believe this is because, uh, in the past, they let so much money go out there for like, uh, renewable, um, uh, energy, and they didn't have anything to show for it. So, I think they want to have a government agency kind of looking at, having extra eyes on this, which makes them, I mean. So, um, I've been working on this since February, and I've talked to a lot of people, I've sat on, on, in many, um, sessions, meetings with the, uh, Oregon Partnering with Energy. And, um, this is what they say, my first thing I need to do is get a partnership going. And I think Sheridan would be the best one for me. I mean, I could do, uh, have a partnership with anybody that is, you know, within the PGE system. But, uh, Sheridan needs some upgrades, you guys want to bring in housing? And it'll, it'll just, uh, be a real good fit for you and for me and PG&E and the climate and the world. Everybody is a winner for this. And, um, thi- this, uh, six megawatts will, uh, power about a thousand homes. So, um, uh, I had, like I said, I've been talking to everybody. Um, Friday, you said, you know, I have to go, uh, I, I can get an exception from the state, which would be a goal, you know, to go ahead. And, um, so I've, I've tried to cover all my bases and look into everything that I need to do to get this going. But, uh, my first step is to get a partnership going. And I'd like to do it with Sheridan because, you know, you need that substation, uh, uh, updated. And, uh, it only can, uh, take about, it takes about sixteen megawatts now, I believe that's what they said. And, uh, and mine would be another six. So, um, it only has capacity for seventeen. So, uh, it needs to be updated and hopefully we can get this all done at once. You know, with this funding that I'm looking for, from the federal government and the state. So, um, the first thing, uh, we have to do is, uh, apply for a grant to, uh, get all the, um, solar farm and batteries and determine the cost and how it's going to be set up and everything. So, uh, that's what the first hundred thousand dollar grant is going to be for. So, um, and, um, I will be working with the person that's, uh, going to be, um, uh, putting that application in. The application has to come from, uh, like, uh, entity like Sheridan, like, uh, or another, uh, uh, business that's going to be, uh, you like getting this, getting this, uh, energy, uh, be given to them. That, that would be, uh, uh, they will have that energy allotted to them. So, and, you know, also, um, our future, we don't know what's going to happen in the future and, you know, you very well may need this, you know, uh, energy for a thousand homes, uh, allotted just for Sheridan. They can't take that away from you. So, that's a very good thing. So, there's many good things about this. It, it'll look good for Sheridan to, uh, be involved with, um, with, uh, you know, renewable energies. It looks very good in, uh, this day and age. And we all know what's going on, you know, in the South and, and the Midwest. I mean, people are dying because of this climate thing. So, um, I just feel this is a really, uh, win-win for everybody involved. And I hope, uh, you know, we can partner together. And I would be, like I said, helping the person, um, uh, that's putting in the application and this type of thing. So, that's my feel.
So, as far as partnering, so, somebody from the city would have to submit whatever grant to the energy, energy.
That's right.
The.
So, it comes through Sheridan, it would come through Sheridan.
Is it from the Department of Energy or the Energy Trust of Oregon or?
It's the Department, I think it's everybody. Everybody wants to have more eyes on the money that's coming from the government, which to me is makes sense.
So, that first hundred thousand, is that just the planning part?
Yes.
Okay, so then, so that's for planning, and then after that, there's a bigger grant for construction?
Right, we have to, yeah, we have to get other, uh, other money for construction. That will, that'll have to come from the, from the, uh, federal and state. Because, um, uh, it's not going to come from a private, um, uh, enterprise. That it'll, it'll become, and, you know, I can pay it back, you know, and so that other people can utilize that funding also. So, it's, I think it's a really good situation.
Liz.
So, might I just have to make a statement? So, you have a farm that you're willing to put these, so, the solar panel construction, this sounds like a huge construction, to that much megawatts of, of solar energy. And you said, first you said it would power a thousand homes, and then later on in the conversation, in your presentation, you said four thousand. So, which one is it?
Oh, did I say four?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's a thousand.
It's a thousand, okay.
Probably a thousand homes.
Okay, okay, and so, um, um, what, so the partnership with us would be that we would utilize this power for these homes?
Yes, you get the, you get the allotment of the power, that is given to Sheridan. That power is allotted to Sheridan only. But, uh, the, all the funding comes back, it comes through you, like, uh, when they, uh, to, um, to pay the bills, it'll come through you. And, uh, also that fund, uh, the, what PG&E, uh, with a contract with PG&E, it will come through you and then just come to me.
Okay, I have solar panels and my, the way it works with my house, and I don't know if it works on a huge farm this way, I have to pay for those solar panels, and then I have a processing fee with PGE. So, you're talking, so you're saying that the, the grant money would be to pay for the solar panels and the construction of this? And then who, then the homeowner would pay for the?
Well, it just goes into PG&E, that, uh, energy would go to PGE and then they sell it.
Absolutely pay off all the solar panels and the construction. You don't get that money from PGE until everything's paid off.
Well, as far as I know, I, I mean, it may change because, uh, P, what, you know, PG&E may have funding for that. I know they're looking to possibly do funding like that. But, um, from what I understand, the funding would come from the federal government and the state. And then, uh, PG&E, uh, just pays a me for the electricity or pays, you know, goes through your hands. Everything always goes through the, um, uh, the partner's hands, because that's the way they want it.
I think, Liz, I think the, the construction grant would, would pay for that construction and the panels, so then.
They would be paid for.
Yeah, so then.
And then PG buys the power, okay.
Yeah.
You've got twenty-five acres, uh, to put a, you know, solar farm on, and you're looking for a partner that, and Sheridan would suffice and be best. What do we have to do to be your partner in, in the, apply for this, uh, grant? What else do we need to do?
Well, uh, you have to apply for the grant and work with me on that. And, uh, then the funding will, you know, come to you, and then I, uh, the, um, contractors that I'm going to get, and I'll be talking to the person also in Sheridan, that's going to be that person that I, that you designate. And, uh, so then I will just pay them, but the funding comes, you know, through a government agency.
I guess what I'm asking, like, like, I can tell process so far.
Okay.
But, as a partner, is our, uh, the, what we bring to this is, A, we have the application for the grant that we put in, and then, B, some of that electricity finally comes back to us, is, are there, is there any other requirements the city's going to need if we want to partner with you?
I don't, I don't believe so, there's nothing, uh, the, I will take care of everything. I mean, there's going to have to be, um, you know, after, when it's paid back, it'll be, uh, the profit. And there's going to have to be, uh, somebody to take care of, you know, the farm all the time. There'll be somebody there working all the time. So, you know, that's part of what it's going to cost. But Sheridan doesn't do anything but handle the money.
Well, how would we allocate what homes get the solar energy?
Well, you just have a, uh, it's a block amount of energy that is, that is given to, uh, sold to PGE, and then that is allocated to Sheridan. That's the way I understand it, it just goes through. Yeah, it isn't, you just don't allocate it to separate homes.
Last thing, yes.
So, the city has to write the grants?
Yeah.
And it's more than one grant, because we've got one that start does the.
Right.
The cost and the administration and all that. But then, after that's been approved and we get the grant, uh, the city has to write the next grant for the production of and the installation of the solar farm.
Right.
Okay. And the city has to administer the money. What else does the city get?
Well, they get that allocation of, of that's, that energy, that's what they get.
We don't get any money?
No.
Are there tax credits? Are there incentives?
There is tax credits with, uh, solar energy, there is.
The first year.
Is it the first year? I'm not sure on, you know, what it would be for a solar farm like this. I haven't looked into that, but I.
I'm just saying, um, we're doing all the work.
Well, I'll be doing, I'll be doing all the work. We're, I'm going to just bring all the information that I have gathered, and we're going to talk about it to whoever who is designated person, but.
But writing a grant, it takes a administrator and it takes a person that knows how to write the grant, to get the grant. And it has to have a lot of information and it takes a lot of work and time. I'm just.
Right, and, and, and like I said, I've sat in on many meetings for about two and a half months, three months with the Department of Energy. And, uh, they, um, have, uh, they have meetings twice a week for an hour, hour and a half. And they were, um, they helped the people, uh, write this grant, write these grants. So, it was, uh, I mean, it is, uh, it, I mean, it'd be kind of fun, really. I mean, I wish I could do it, but I, they won't let me, they, they said they want eyes on it.
So, you, so you wouldn't write it?
I can't write it. It has to be coming from another.
So.
But I would be involved in that with all the information I have.
It sounds like the city would have to submit it at least.
Yeah.
The city would also.
Submit it.
So, the city would also have to write it in.
Yeah, but it, you wouldn't be just left alone, I mean, because I'm the one that's involved in it. So, uh, I'm the one that has all the information about it. So, it wouldn't be like, it would be something we'd be working on together, yeah.
What's the term of the lease?
What's the term of the lease?
How long, how long is that going to be profitable to run it like this? I mean, do your heirs, are they committed to going on after?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's been a trust.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you have any paperwork? Do you have like, a, a grant application, like a cover letter or something that we can work on?
Well, I, uh, didn't bring that because I'm right at the point of trying to get a partnership.
Do you have something that the City Council can read though? Like a website or something that we can get down into the weeds on? I think that would be.
Yeah, um, at, uh, Oregon Department of Energy, they, you know, have a, a full information.
If I give you my business card, would you be able to send that link to me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go work on that and that.
Yeah, they'll be able to.
Go ahead, Liz, I'm waiting for her. Go ahead.
So, when upgrades are done, because, you know, energy changes all the time from the time they first started the solar panels to what they are now.
Right.
Who's responsible for the upgrades if the solar panels are required?
Well, that would be me, I mean, I would, I would, absolutely, and the profits that would be made off of that, yeah, I would just, that, it would be, you know, I'd be paying for the person that's taking care of it. And, yeah, from my, from my end, what I would receive.
Nick, I can't call on you. You might be able to share when you're, when, when you come up, but, um, okay, is there any, any other council questions?
More information.
Yeah.
More info.
Yeah, it sounds like we just want to work.
Okay, so, this website, I'll send you a link to the, uh, Oregon Department of Energy that'll explain everything on how to do this. But, like I said, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't just say, okay, do this. You know, I'd be right in there with you and, because I, I've got a lot of information, you know, of what. And I've looked, and I was, uh, sat in on many meetings to hear of how other people were doing it. It's just a matter of.
Would you mind something as a proposal of what you see as a parpa- as a partnership, so we can read it carefully and consider it? Because it, would you mind doing that?
Okay, you, you, you want a proposal of, uh, the partnership, I would, okay.
Yes, but you're, yeah, something that, we'd like to see more information about, of what you're proposing, it's my hand, I'm saying.
Yeah, sure. Okay, that sounds fine.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you for coming.
I hope to hear from you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
So, uh, next, real quick, we're gonna, um, vote on the union contract. So, um, I don't know if you want to come up or not, but, yeah, I don't know if there's any more questions at this point, um.
You know, if there's not any questions, we did want to kind of make this, like, statement. Ideally, we'd like to have this city, like, able already, but with a lot of different departments that were part of the union, we wanted to make sure they got every person in there, get their, get their voice in. So, it took a little bit more time, you know, just to get things worked out, for, represented everybody in there. And we also, long, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done with this and all the patients that have had, who went through with this. If there's any questions, I mean, I'm more than happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Okay, um, we go ahead and call for a vote then. Uh, well, sorry, not a vote. Anyone want to make a motion?
I can make a motion, the, the council, the city and the, um, the Oregon Southern Idaho District Council of Laborers and Laborers International Union of North America and Laborers Local seven thirty-seven, um, agree, I mean, accept the contract as presented. I'm starting it.
Okay, any discussion on it? Alright, all in favor? Okay, let's see now, okay.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
See you later.
Alright, so, now we'll, um, go on to the task force report, so Nick, you want to, uh, come up here?
Sure. Up here?
Yeah, yeah, the. What do they call it?
The lectern.
It's a little lectern, it's not a podium, I mean, it's a lect-.
Well, you know, um. Yeah, just, you know, I like to work with handouts, we're going to start that process with a handout. Okay, so we have three open going around, so what I'll do is wait until everybody has those, and then we'll go forward from there. Basically, I exhume those from my folder materials, so it took a little bit to do it, and I think it's fairly complete, but maybe not, so. We go through the record that we have to work with. Okay, so to start with, uh, there's one that has the number one top left corner, city of Sheridan, agenda. Housing task force about center, forty percent of the way down. Then the next one that we'll cover, the header is Resource Center Overview on the top, and then the third one, which is towards, and then we number three is Sheridan Task Force Agenda from February coming first. So, I went back to look at where we started, you know, that was a dynamic process, and this was the result of a lot of work that the council had done prior to this. There were other meetings that preceded this, there were surveys that were taken, articles in the paper, you guys got a lot of feedback and kind of came up with what I think was initially listed in that handout number one, where it talks about the housing task force to seek for better understanding of scope, and I'm not going to read the rest of that. Okay, so, that, I think, is what pretty much launched that task force initially, and there was a bunch of flaying work that sort of went out in the bulletin board, you had to apply, is there?
What I remembered, and everybody knows my memory is not the best. Um, the, the council had already said, even before you got called with the task force, that we were not going to be providing housing. Therefore, this is just with a homeless task, or homelessness task force versus a housing task force. Because I think that, uh, caused confusion with the community, because they'd already said, we don't want any shelter or camp. But now we're, we've got a housing task force, well, what are they doing? They're not going to house, so I think you got mislabeled to start with, because it started before you got here. Does anybody else agree with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, uh, we'll leave whoever we're going to head at the end of this, but that's an important point. And I think you're dead on, from what I could tell, that thing started on a less than solid footing, and it was shaky from the get-go. And that led to problems that we probably didn't need to, to, to deal with, that had to resolve anyway. So, that's perfect, because that's, that's one of the points that I wanted to make, so thanks.
So, you have something right for your team.
Well, you know, it, it just points the importance of language, you know, because one word can mislead people a long way. So, that's, I'm glad you picked that up, because that's really why I wanted to start with this. So, bingo, you're launched out the gate, the gun goes off, the horses are down the track, and you're not quite sure where you're headed, there's no rails, right? And somebody's out there, you know, with pistols on the side of the track trying to distract the horse, you take that. So, so that's how it started. And then, there was some follow-up, and if you look on this next handout, are we doing the first one? That's exactly all I wanted to cover on that one, so. The Resource Center Overview, this, I think, spun out after January seventeenth City Council meeting. I went back to the council notes and kind of exhumed this one page later. Does that sound right? I'm not sure I went to the meeting, but I, I did get this.
Please, who wrote this? Did we get it in this format? I don't know, who wrote this?
I don't know.
I don't know either, I've never seen this format.
It was, it was in the packet that I had with that January seventeenth.
Did Mary Ann like this?
I'm not quite sure where, who the author was or where it came from.
This is on the draft task force final report that I'm looking at here. Sure enough, January seventeenth meeting, reviewed City Council guidance and revised task force expectation. As shown at the top on the meeting agenda, this looks like what that is. So, certainly it happened on the seventeenth.
The discussion happened, because I don't know that, I think what we're asking is who wrote the document, who are authored it?
Yeah, it's, it's one of me, I know that.
Yeah, but as you can see, it's a little bit more specific, like way on the other side of the spectrum. So, when you look at that, I, I think it's a much thorough, one more thorough ease. The question of really what the council wanted, what are the specific outcomes, what to include steps? And it was constrained from what, from what we started with, you know, there wasn't anything about housing in this. And I think that, I don't know the, the background, it's the why it got riddled down, but I'm sure it had to do with the input that people produced from the community. And it might have had based on that word about housing. You know, when you put that in writing and it gets in the media, people talk, and social media goes out, who knows what's going to happen? But I would, I would guess, not known for sure, that that probably had some role, you know, that they got to do. Okay, so that's just kind of part of the transition. And that leads us to the handout number three, which was February coming first. Task Force Agenda. Which basically took the information that we had from the council from the initial, and this revised document from the seventeenth to develop that task force objective that shows in the middle of the stage. And it is more focused on providing services, it isn't anything about housing or anything like that in there. Because that really was pretty clearly the intent of that, and that's what that task force chased down. You know, what can we do for services, one-stop shopping service center and, uh, the resource center that I think is up and running still, right?
Exactly.
Okay. So, that's, that's how we got from where we started with the housing task force to where we are now with the resource center. So, that's from A to B, that leads us to today. Right, what I'd like to do is, I know it's been a while, but we were asked a little bit ago to come up with a final report for the council, which we did. And, uh, I like to write reports so that there's not a lot of fluff, there's just a lot of meat. So, they're mostly bullets, you know, we all have jobs to do, we all need to wade through pages of stuff and try to slurp the heat out of it. So, that's what I set up for a goal. But I know it's been a while, and you may or may not recall, but at the very end of that, final report or the recommendations, so. And, you know, all of us here have a lot of experience, which is kind of, you know, we've been on a part lot. But what I wanted to do is to refresh our memories, and I'm going to cover really briefly what those recommendations are for a reason. Okay, here's what we started. We believe the value of recombating the task force after intermission helps support Sheridan, union means of the community. And the task that that group as a task force can do include continuing to provide support for the town hall meeting, I'm not sure what the status of that is anymore. I went out of the picture for a while. And outcomes as a result from the town hall meeting or subsequent similar meetings. So, is that still on track?
I mean, we're on track for town hall, but, uh, I mean, it's kind of shifted from being about, um, you know, the results of, of the task force, um, to more of just kind of a more general town hall. Um, this will, this topic will be, we'll talk about, but it's not going to be the focus of the, of the town hall. So, it'll be a little different than I think what was initially planned.
Yeah, yeah, because what I recall from the last meeting I went to is. Yeah, because what I recall from the last meeting I went to is that there was a downtown revitalization grant emphasis. Is that what?
That was, that would be part of it, and then we discussed, um, breaking it up into two. Um, so there'd still be a, a town hall that would be, you know, have nonprofit organizations there, but then also, um, like a state of the city address and then discuss this. And then also, um, there was another piece to it too that I'm forgetting, but the, the grant is a, would be a separate. Separate, um, and that would be more like, like, like workshop type of thing. Like people come in and they give input on different topics and things like that to give data, uh, to apply for a grant.
Alright, well, yeah, things change. That's reasonable. Okay, the other thing we talked about was evaluating expansion of adding partners to provoke and hope staff to help expand the services available. Because, you know, they do a good job, but there are more needs than that organization's capable of providing, which may fit a little bit where, where the current town hall bulk was headed. Evaluating the feasibility, providing, uh, more facilities. And I don't know where you guys are with facilities. You know, that's kind of a sensitive subject, but that's why it says evaluate, not recommend.
Likes, like city facilities, like.
The rest of the census, not to meet the needs that we've been having to deal with.
Oh, okay.
Talking about.
Of young houses. And I think it goes back to, you know, there's discussion that's kind of the, the background from when we get started that kind of focuses around, is it a shower trailer or something's around yet? There's some stuff, some things out there that people haven't interested. And that's why it doesn't say incorporate it, focus on and evaluate. And then what other, what other task, you know, the council might want to have that group up here. So that's really what we were looking at. In the follow-up bullets, there's only two of them. It's recommend the council engage a meaningful discussion to prepare a clear written direction for the task force to facilitate the work and support of meeting proposals and objectives and missions. And that's kind of looking back from where we started, from beginning that process to where we ended up. And I would think, not having been, be close to it. I'm a firm believer that if you start with good effort and a lot of work upfront, it's a lot easier than if we kind of go, well, this is what I think, and there's not much consensus. It just doesn't work particularly as well. So that's what that vote was meant to help you do. And then it's also talking about that we look at additional support that the city can provide to meet those things. And it's talking about close coordination between City Council and the city manager, who can then work with task force members to help assure that the objectives are met. Because, you know, that group, uh, I work with a lot of groups in a lot of different settings doing several different items, but they have a lot of energy and they have a lot of skill and talents. And I would think if we take some time to line out exactly what you want, they'll get it. Because, you know, that, that steady stop and go and constant interruption, some disruption along the way, it just takes a little toll. So that front-end work, again, I think just goes a long way to help that. And again, you know, their recommendations, you know, we don't decide anything. You know, it's good to be in the recommendation mode. We don't have any responsibility to, to live up to decisions, but we do our best to come up with what we think is most in line with what you're asking for that group to do. And that's all where there is. But it kind of leads me to a couple of other points that I just wanted to cover briefly, is that, um, the lesson to me is, you know, do you folks read a lot outside of work here at all? So, in my background, they used to recommend that we read a book every month. So one of the, the people they talked about was Stephen Covey, business writer. And, you know, this is a business, even though it's a public-oriented business, this is still a business. And one of his principles is, you know, begin with the end in mind. And I think that would really help us quite a bit. If we begin with the end in mind for this group and then frame what it is that the council wants that group to focus on, will really help them to be successful and help you achieve goals. So that's just one possible. And the other one that, that I like, um, having spent a lot of years in WALAT fire is ten standard firefighting orders. And the one that applies is live, give clear instructions and be sure they're understood. So what that means in the fire world is that you write things down. Every morning we do this. Before anybody sets out to go work on the fire, every morning in dark thirty, you all get together and there's a morning briefing. You go over the plan for the day with everybody who's working it. And you do the same thing with people who work it now. You go over it with them. It's in writing, and then there are breakout sessions where you meet with the people who work for you and you make sure you answer all their questions before you send them off to work there. So those three things just go a long way. And it's a much more hazardous setting than what it is that we're engaged with here. You know, if it works there, if it works there, it's gonna work here for sure. So that, that I hope answers some of the questions that you might have related to that. But I'm here for anything that's not a lot of.
Uh, Liz, do you have, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you telling us anything to us. I did have some questions. So, and I know maybe this wasn't part of the task force, um, preview, but what I wanted to know in the final report, because it seems like the final decision was Provoking Hope moved to Sheridan, and now they're providing the services. So I think what I was looking for was what services are they actually providing? How many people have been identified in Sheridan that are using those services or so far? I know they just started, so we don't know. You know, a definitive answer to that, but, but what, what sort of services are Provoking Hope offering in Sheridan right now?
I'll tell you what I think I would do if I worked for the city. I would ask them for a report on a monthly basis. How many people were here? Which days? How many hours? How many people did you see? What services did you provide? And what more can you provide if you get more help and support? That's, that's what I would ask.
Yes, that's good.
You know, it's up to you. I recommend.
Yeah, that's a good recommendation. Thank you. It really is.
I think you can do that one.
I asked Liz, she'd like a guest speaker to come too.
And then the other thing, I mean, we had talked about this, but, you know, maybe we should ask them about, you know, I like to talk, we probably talk. But we have those Saturday markets here at the food store.
We still have them, yeah.
Yeah, and I like that. I can bring this to myself. There was another organization over there that's really complimentary to what Provoking Hope does. And there were two people there, I have their cards here, and one of the ladies that was there lives up in Goose Neck. And she goes, "You know, our organization does blah, 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 blah," and then it kind of dovetailed basically to my sleep, what Provoking Hope organization does. But I told Heidi, "Don't, we haven't been in contact much. I've been doing other things and she's been busy too." That's the kind of thing that I think you need to talk to that person, that organization. She says, "I'd be willing to come down here." I says, "Oh, do you volunteer like all these other people?" She says, "No, I'm a key position." "But since I live here, it's my community. You know, I'd be willing to come and help those guys out." I'll get, I'll get their card. You got me thinking. I have to get an answer.
Um, any other?
So, it's semi-folded. You can tell there's a little bit of volume stuff here that I have. Maybe it's over here. I already brought it.
Nick, can you mind speaking up? I think some members are having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, okay. Is that better?
Well, the microphone doesn't matter, but this is for online stuff.
Okay, well, you know, I'll tell you what. I've been handling stuff. This has been me work here for allergies for me my entire life. My nose hasn't quit running since like March, like almost not stopped. So it's Oregon Family Support Network. It's the name of the organization. And they're the end health community organization, another wrapped around service provider, and they can help on the family support spaces. They really focus on the family part of the COVID individual part. So that's why I thought it'd be a, a good organization to develop, really. And they're willing to help. And that's the thing of most of the kids. The one we want to contact is one on the back. She can bring her, of course. The person who wants to help left her cards at home, but her partner had her card. She goes, "Oh, I'll write my stuff on the back." So she did. Can you hear any better?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I can't hear either, as you can tell.
What? Alright, uh, okay, Ian, go ahead.
I know that the task force ended kind of abruptly, um, and I was able to attend one of the meetings, and I was able to observe you running the mains. It's fantastic, so I, I thought you did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
With, uh, facilitating those meetings. Uh, I'm really curious, was there a, a, a plan at some point for the rest of the members to contribute in some way as well with the final report, as in like, they noticed from their perspective that, um, such and such was the case? And then this person from their perspective noticed that maybe something else was interesting point. Uh, so just, was there other input that was gonna be gathered or was it gathered?
What, you know, it was kind of, uh, truncated rather quickly, and I, I think in our last meeting when people felt, well, we did what was asked of us, and they, we didn't go back and follow up with individuals, but I kind of liked that idea that we could rerun and say, "Hey, if you folks want to, you know, here's what we have, and if you want to rerun and add to that, we could," but we, we didn't do that because I, I thought there was some kind of time constraint where we needed to get it done for a meeting that was upcoming. Was that not great? I don't remember. But no, that wasn't done, but I like it.
Yeah, that seems like a, a really valuable piece of input that maybe somebody just didn't get a chance to say something that they were thinking about that has been kind of rolling around their head, just a matter of value.
And then, you know, the, the thing is that summary came from an aggregation of the key points that we had throughout the course of those meetings. You know, most, almost everything in there came as a result of what we had captured in each individual meeting. So that's when we take the time to really hear from everybody before we adjourn those get-togethers, because, you know, it's still fresh on your mind. If you look back, at least on the way out, if I look back on those things like a month or two months later, it's, it's a little fuzzy, but I like that idea because we did do that immediately afterward. It's probably even more helpful to have one last look back. You had a good idea.
And at this point, it's still a draft form. I mean, to get them this dialogue before it's closed out, so I guess that could be the next step. To get out to those members and then send that over to Nick. He incorporates that. But, um, we have Nick here in case there's other pieces of it that you would add or want, so while we close it out. Just for the report, I mean, at some other point, I think the, the, we probably have a work session around now left, right? Do we wanna continue with part two, or are we totally done or what? But so just for the report.
Just the report.
So it's the report right now.
I think, um, Heidi, did you add anything to the report? Or was it just strictly from Nick?
That was mostly all Nick. I mean, I sat down and just gave him some ideas, but he did definitely, ninety-nine percent of it. He showed an excellent, great job, I thought. But I think we are considering adding a little bit more of the, the transition, like these could be a part of it, talking about the mission statement that started in the next call, the next meeting, so that people have that background. And a little bit of the, you know, the timeline transition, I think is important.
Yeah, I, I think, um, the ball points were, I, I appreciate that you basically just got right to the point, but I think, um, some of the council members thought it would be a little bit, it could be longer or a little bit more info, um, but, um, I guess, um, if you, if you aren't condensing it, then, you know, maybe that's, you know, that's the, the format for, I guess, that's, that's fine. But if some of the council members who thought it might be a little bit more lengthy, if they wanna add what they're kind of looking for, that might be helpful for the final report.
Sure.
Jim, you wanna go ahead?
Excuse me. At each meeting, uh, at the end, did you come up with a, uh, here's what we decided this meeting? I'm looking at the bullet boards and I really don't see where it says, okay, here's what we, the group decided this.
Yeah, and the way I like to do it, you know, you can probably help me out, but when we, when we have those meetings, I'm a big flip turn poster guy. And we post that on the wall on posters. First of all, I don't, I don't learn by listening. You know, I need to write stuff down, and then I need to go back and read it later. And I believe if you do that during the meeting, that's written, everybody's forced to look at it. And if you look at it long enough, it just sinks in more. So we all, we all basically sit and look at it, and basically they're over there where that map was, and they're over there where that map was, and then he places a flat spot on the wall that doesn't have a map on it. We posted those big giant posters, those like these. That's what we use. And, uh, then they're folded up and put back in that folder, so that we make sure we have everything the way it was captured. Because you can't beat handwritten notes when it comes to regeneration of the material and the topic, you know? Unless you transcribe it, and that's a lot of work.
Great, Ian?
So there's man, address.
Oh, I, yeah.
Is there a, so there is another report that's forthcoming?
It sounds like Nick is gonna take your ideas of having other people add to it, but yes, a draft implies that there is the final. It could have been if nobody had any feedback, I think.
Right.
And this is it, but now it sounds like there's a little bit to go into it.
I'm curious if you have any additions to put into the report as well.
Besides, I keep adding the mission statements.
Okay, I guess.
I came in later in the task force. You might not have that history. Like I was there for the initial one, and then I, I had way too much going on at that point.
Right, I guess like, I mean, on some level, there seems to be, uh, there was, there was a lot, as stated, there was a lot of difficulties with the task force. And I, uh, we've already identified several of the issues, um, and I, I guess I'm part of the reason why I'm saying I, I would like to hear from the participants that, uh, even the ones that, that left. I'd love to hear why, you know, and, but I was, was thinking that as a representative of the council, I guess I would want maybe a, a paragraph, uh, like, or maybe more from you, just saying just, this is what was happening with it, with it from, from your perspective as well, to, to be able to gain that, the, the insight that you had as our, as the manager and as our representative. So.
Well, you know, Ian, I, I can add from my perspective what I know some of the folks thought and why they no longer continued. Because some people thought it was gonna be more in line with that initial mission about facilities and providing housing, and then when they found out it wasn't, they said, "Well, that's not gonna really address the key thing that I wanted to work on."
That's what I wanted.
You know, and I, I know that a couple people were like that, but, you know, I think it's probably a good idea to make sure that we, we take those steps. And what I heard, I wanna make sure I get this right, to make sure that we meet your expectations. I heard four things. One of them is add the, uh, for, the, those three topics that we handed out as a kind of a preamble. Here's the direction as it started, modified, and ended up. We do that upfront, put the dates with them. So that's one. And we could route that as it was written to the, the whole task force, including those that dropped out. Then it will go to Heidi.
And I will think of this. It's not often that a city manager adds opinion-based, and so I will work on that. Usually I'm such a recording.
Well, well, maybe you could do that then instead of your opinion, just say when you got started, what you were asked to do, unless.
I was asked to make sure Nick had what he needed. I will work on that.
I guess Liz, I mean, excuse me, sorry. May I?
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, excuse me. Uh, I guess I'm more interested in, um, the task force ended. There's no, without really a resolution, uh, the, because something happened, right? Then we, then we no longer needed to be there. And I get that. I think everybody kind of gets that now. But I guess that my interest is more in the process, like for instance, when, uh, we would go out and do something, uh, some sort of operation in military, when we come back, we'd say, "What did we do right? What did we do wrong?" Let's, let's look at it and say, is that something we could do better in the future? Because you have a unique, um, viewpoint as kind of being this, the overall viewer and saying, yeah, you know, like there was a real hangup in this spot. And in the future, when we revisit this topic or we have another task force, then this is something that was a really good note that only you were necessarily privy to, that we could benefit from in the future.
That helps me a lot. Thank you. And I can do that.
Yeah, I don't think the content is necessarily as important, like the content of the task force, but more. Yeah, I don't think the content is necessarily as important, like the content of the task force, but more about how did we do as a city running the task.
The execution.
Yeah, sorry. I'm really bad.
So you wanna after.
We're getting used to each other.
Yes.
I ask all the questions.
I can help you with that after. I'll at least give you a format.
Oh, it doesn't have to be that format necessarily, just.
I, I got one. I think. Yeah.
Well, we use the military one at work.
Sure, sure.
It works.
Yes, I got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question for Adam.
Okay, are we good?
Anybody else?
Continue.
Well, hold on. Jim, I'm just, just popped up the April 3rd. We've got the point in town, uh, point in time information was reviewed. Are there any opinions on that?
Well, you know, the point in time stuff, there were some inherent constraints in the process.
Yes.
And I think people recognize those. It's one day with willing people who happen to be encountered that day. It's like, if you tally that much more, I'm not sure what you get.
Like, yeah.
You know, a sample of what they say is not a sample.
Considering they say we had 12 homeless people in Sheridan. I'm sorry. We got a lot more than 12 and they weren't ever counted. So, but I, did anybody in the task force relay that? That they thought it was a little odd to tally 12?
Well, you know, there was, that's always gonna bring discussion. So what happens is, you know, that number came up. And then you know, it came, the numbers came up before the point line got picked up. And they're still, people say, well, how many people have it now? Well, it depends. You know, when you focus at the American Legion, you say, well, yeah, but I don't. Funny. And then somebody else goes, well, we have maybe 20 to 30. Somebody else says, well, we have maybe 15. There's no way with that group, since they're so mobile, to get a solid read. Because they're, they're here today and gone tomorrow. And guess what? They didn't do that in two months or they may never come back. So I, that's why, you know, point in time, you have to take it for what it is. It's a sample. You know, and all samples have limitations, so.
But I just wondered in that specific bullet, if, you know, anybody has said, it seems like there's probably more out there than we didn't get to.
Well, that's why I think a better read on what we have is somebody like, folks at the American Legion that see people week after week after week. You know, how many do you see every week? And that, that oscillates. But there's a meaning there that's fairly consistent.
I would hope that both of them could give us something like that once we say to them, hey, how many people are you seeing on a daily basis or a weekly basis? But then the, the last two bullet points in that same, for that same meaning, the public information plan discussion continued. I don't know from reading the notes what exactly the public information plan was.
We didn't, we didn't develop a public information. Well, it kinda led to where we were going with the town hall. And what that was, what that was designed, if my memory is correct, to help us do, is here's what we have. Okay, these services are provided. So we were gonna try to formulate a plan to get the message out to the public for two reasons. To share the work that's been done. And the second of all, to dispel any misinformation. Like we started to have to, you know, fight at the very beginning. Because you know how the stories were lost, didn't you? People got too much time on their hands, so they drink too much beer and the things developed.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the kind of things that we, I expect to get just a little more fleshed out. I, I'm with you. I don't like to read a lot of, I'm bad. I use a lot flowery language to make it sound rude. But there was a lot that isn't very, the next bullet is an action plan for the task force that's briefly discussed. You know, give us a hint what the whole was discussed, I think.
Well, again, based on memory, which is less than perfect. It was, what else do we need to do to make sure that what we have in place will meet the intent for what the council wanted to do? And I think, you know, the fortunate thing is that with the intervention provoking hope, it had kind of addressed meeting the need that we understood you wanted. But I, I still think there's work to do. Okay, and I, I would think it would be worthwhile to pick up from close to where we left off. And the first thing is, maybe folks think about, okay, here's what we have. And we can probably chase down this dovetail part of the organization that we talked about. That's kind of a simple. But what I would ask is, what do you really want? Okay, that's what you have, which is a lot more than what we had a year ago. Okay? So you know what the issues are. Do you know what you want? You know, people, like, that group will do virtually what you want, but they really, really need to know. Again, in writing, greet people, answer their questions. Bring that, I'd bring that group in. If you figure out what you want and you write it down, I invite it to the meeting. Say, okay, kids, here's what we're looking at doing. And go through it. And then, you know, make sure, what questions did, and you're gonna hit questions. And I'll tell you what, it's much better to get upfront because that will resolve any issues and it will get you closer to the end much more quickly.
Yes.
And then just kinda continue to work. You know, I don't think it's a bad idea to update every two months or whatever you think. Just so you know, you know, things happen. People are well intentioned, but sometimes they get a slightly different variant of what they thought you wanted compared to what you wanted. So you know, a relatively routine update, I think, helps both. Because people don't wanna do work that you never wanted. It's kind of a waste of effort. They will work and meet your intent, but they really need to know that's what the work is due. So I, I think about it, you know, if you really wanna reengage that group, just take the time and think through what it is you wanna have there. And you know what? You need, you don't need 100% agreement, but you need consensus. That means some people in here are gonna say, well, it's not what I'm gonna do, but I can live with it. And you just bite the bullet and do it because you aren't gonna get this many people agree on 100% on anything, are you? Have you done that yet? I mean, you vote 100% maybe, but you never agree on it. I've been that much.
There's a lot of eyes looking around.
Well, yeah, just to guess.
Nick, you're very good at what you do. Thank you for sharing your talent and being a local person.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Hey, thanks a lot for your input, Nick. That was really great. Okay.
All right, so next we've got New Oregon cities, let's say priorities for 25.6. So we have some time. We don't have to thankfully vote on this or figure this out tonight. But I, we did, didn't wanna talk about it. So Roxy gave us this list that's numbered, which is helpful because we don't have to, we can say number four instead of full funding and alignment. So, so we, we get to pick five of these topics. And then of those five, that gets relate to the LLC from us. It's basically our one vote, our one voice that goes to LLC and then the other cities provide their priorities. And then that's how they determine what to do.
Didn't we do this last year, the same thing? We pick five things with a shared need most, and then we shift it up then.
Two years.
Two years.
Every two years. It's so dumb.
Yes, I don't, I feel like I did something similar to this, but I don't think it was LLC. So Heidi, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to apologize. I got interrupted quite a lot when I was typing this. And I am realizing that there is a difference. So please do not use the one I typed. Use the other.
Oh, the, they want to page four.
Yep. What a step in the middle.
Use this one. Use this one.
Oh, but I'm sorry. My priority is on that one.
Well, it's still yellow.
So I was just gonna see if, if there's some that we feel like we definitely shouldn't even consider that might speed things up.
Or why don't we list the ones we prioritize and then.
If you wanna try that, we can do that too. But I plan on talking about this at the next meeting and then possibly the one after that if we still have time.
Jim, I like your idea because we can eliminate, we just, we don't have to think about those anymore because we already win on those. So we don't need those. And then we can just ignore what we, what we think is a better.
And I thought we could, you know, have more time to think about it and.
Yeah, can I buy your highlighting of that? I mean, I like this.
So we can look through here if there's any that stand out that definitely you don't want to do with. Yeah, I could, yeah, we can go through the list. I'll give everybody the thumbnail.
I didn't intentionally leave any. I was actually very happy typing. I was like, oh, thanks.
I like the format.
Yes. So.
I was just gonna go through the list, see if everybody is comfortable considering it or if people want us to not consider it at all.
Okay, yeah. That's easy. Yeah.
Okay, so number one, I wrote numbers next to all mine. That's, that'll help me out. So number one is the infrastructure funding.
Did we say yes?
Yeah.
Do we, yes or no?
Just, just God, we wanna talk about it.
Yeah, consider it. It can be considered. Okay.
Yeah, so it makes a short list.
Yeah. Shelter and homeless response.
No.
Okay. Okay, so we can cross that one off.
I'm gonna keep the official list.
Are you okay? Okay.
I keep an official list.
Okay, next one.
Tyler.
Okay, next, employment lands readiness and availability. Okay.
Isn't that the brown filled one?
Yes. You got one, yes.
I'm interested in talking about it.
Yeah, yeah. It's, well, looking at it, it's like about recognizably, does it really land capacity, strategic location?
Yeah.
Maybe. Maybe brown. But yeah, we can. Okay. Full funding and alignment for housing production.
Yes.
Okay. Well, there's one.
One yes? Okay, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Restoration of recreational immunity.
No.
Okay. If anybody really wants to talk about it. Okay, you can cross that one off. Okay. Leaver old health enhancements.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Keep that one. Okay. Continued addiction policy reform.
No, stay from start to end.
Done with it.
I left a note.
Okay. Building decarbonization efficiency and modernization.
No, no.
Okay. Investment in community resiliency and climate planning resources.
Yes, resiliency in community is probably something.
Is somebody saying yes?
Somebody said, somebody said yes.
Two of us are, yeah.
It's like the opposite of a black ball, whatever that is.
Okay, address energy affordability challenges from rising utility costs.
Yes.
Yes.
Ian's saying yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say yes, but I, I would like to see something in energy about, maybe, at some point, maybe, maybe we can, I know this is like out there, but there's towns around here that have opportunities. For instance, Lever produces electricity for itself and they, they have a really great setup. It's, they're like either location. Anyway, my long story short is, I would like to see people looking into producing their own power. For instance, the Mack Water and Light has outstanding rates. People move to McMenville. I, I talked to a tenant of one of my clients who moved to McMenville because it's cheaper to pay higher rent in McMenville and the lower rates than PGE. So there's, maybe there's opportunities for us to produce power. I don't know. But I'd like to see that somewhere and that kinda sparked my interest in it.
And I'd like to address that PGE came and gave us a nice presentation about other 7.4%.
It's 11.
Yeah, thank you. Dramatically it turns into 11. Did they go up?
A paper, 11.
Yeah, that's what they're pretty good. That's kinda funny.
You mean the trash?
Say again?
Did you say PG or the trash?
PG, PG.
Oh, okay.
They told us 7.4, but it's 11% in the paper.
Oh.
Yeah.
On the last three years, it comes to a 40% increase over a three year period. I just think that's highly rough.
So we're keeping 10. Keeping 10.
Yeah.
Okay. So next one, lodging tax flexibility.
Yeah, we don't have any lodging.
In the future, there could be.
Well, right now we don't.
Okay. Marijuana tax.
Yes.
Yes. Some taxes, yes.
Well, if the state wants some of that money back, you know about that, correct? We used to get more.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay. Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, okay. Next, alcohol tax.
Yes. Yes. That's the only way we'll generate funds in a small town.
Okay, so we'll keep it. Digital equity and inclusion. Digital equity and inclusion.
I don't even know what that means.
No.
Okay. Cybersecurity and privacy. Okay. Resilient, future-proof broadband infrastructure and planning investment.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That can cover a couple of the others if we have a chance to talk about them.
Okay. Artificial intelligence.
No.
Broad category, right?
Good grief.
Throw it out. Okay. 2025 transportation package.
Yes. Yeah.
Correct.
A lot to say about that.
Funding and expanding public and intercommunity transit.
I would think no because we don't actually have control of the public, intercommunity transit. It's.
Can I add to that? Not advocating for it, but there's been talk about like Sheraton and Willamina having some sort of a bus system of its own between it. And I think, or more bus stops added. And so I think that that's what that would incorporate, just so you know.
We'll actually see that.
Okay.
I think it's a yes.
It's now a yes.
I had already crossed it out of my official list.
I gotta write it down though, so we're good.
Okay. Shift from a gas tax to a road user fee.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Oh, my.
Another conversation.
Oh, my gosh. That's what Washington does.
All right, community safety and neighborhood livability.
Sounds good, but.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Okay.
Others cover that.
Infrastructure funding. Oh, wait.
That's.
That, sorry, that one's crossed out. Ignore that one.
It's that's a number one because it's the same as number one. It's the same project. It's worded identical for both of them. It's just being supported by both committees.
Yes.
Okay.
It's already on the shortlist.
Please, please base the planning.
What, it's more clear to explain that I even rather didn't understand it.
So developing solutions to address water needs within a watershed basin and surface water or groundwater, basically that. And we've already got a reservoir, so we don't need to start with square one. We've already got the reservoir. We need to move on.
Well, they're talking about basins, so I'm thinking they're talking about eastern Oregon. This would apply more to areas, right?
Well, do we wanna talk about it?
No.
Okay. All right. Operator and, operator in training apprenticeships.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. So Tyler, are you on it?
Is this what we're eliminating?
Yes.
We're not working, council.
We're eliminating number two, number five, number seven,
Yes.
eight, 11, 14, 15, 17, 21 and 22.
Yep.
Correct. So that gives us a lot less to have to think around with. Sorry, fewer for us.
What would you do without it?
So we've got a new, a new list. So next meeting, we'll talk about it more.
Do you want us to prioritize from this list for the next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be helpful if we wanna, can already come with a list and then if.
Okay. How many times then?
It's five. Yeah, Heidi.
Another consideration is, do you want everybody to email me their five and then I can like tally them for you beforehand or something? You've got a little growth, but it groundwork. Okay.
Okay.
And you can kinda put that in the agenda parentheses, council priorities, list to remind us to send it to you rather than when I get here going, oh crap, I didn't do that. Okay, number three, number nine, you know.
Okay, number three, number nine, you know.
I've been in a couple of planning things, and this is, uh, an activity that I didn't initially support, but that I think has worked well, where we list out all of the things that we're talking about, and then everybody gets five stickers.
And you can vote with your stickers, and then whatever gets.
Or as they're coming in, does that count for me?
Or if they send it ahead of time to me, then I can put it in the packet and they can see if it's.
It's less stickers, but.
Stickers are so fun though. I got a lot of stickers on my packets.
It would shorten the meeting a little bit if I didn't.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Rossi.
I want the council to know that, um, a lot of the items on this list were part of a previous survey that L O P did. And, um, staff worked on that, and it was very time consuming, very difficult, and they had to do a lot of research. And I want to thank staff, because it means a lot to me.
Second.
L O P does a lot for our cities, um, maybe some of you don't understand, but they're the basis for a lot of information, for a lot of legislative, um, work. I guess, I sure wrote it down, they do a lot for us, and, um, when they ask for us to fill out a survey, they want it for a reason, and it's to help us go.
They're instrumental in onboarding for new council people too, that press the, the initial presentation. It's very helpful.
Ask people my.
Okay, so, next, we have, I'll send out, we can send out a reminder, and be like, hey, make sure you discuss our list.
I can leave you mine tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty much.
If you're done, I'll take your five.
I can't even have mine here at that.
Okay, so.
I have one last question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
If we were to choose, um, uh, infrastructure funding under community and development, would a choice for infrastructure fundraising under waste of water be a double whammy, do you think?
Are you talking about?
Or it's the same?
You're talking about the double?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think it's just the same.
It wouldn't do any good to vote.
Well, there's, I don't think the rules say that you can't give all five of your votes to one subject.
But they are two separate entities. One is community development, and one is wa- water.
But they're gonna be cosponsored.
They'll be.
And all the bills and everything.
So I'm just wondering how that might affect how we vote.
I don't think it says that we can give all your votes to one.
Okay. It was the same.
Sorry, I was.
Again.
Okay. Just gonna move this on. But, so, next, going to do business, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash T, adopting a park host agreement. Do we have any questions about this? Do you agree with it? Ross, Rossi, go ahead.
Um. Under the agreement, uh, description of functions, one.
Which page? Oh, the top.
Twenty-five.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
One point two, it says, uh, that the city, the provision of the host site, garbage service, water service, and power, all at no charge. Uh, internet too?
No, we don't have internet there. That's a good reason to have a park host, is because cameras require internet. So the internet cost and the camera cost there would be significant, so there's no internet.
And on two point one, um, if this is going to be their residence, uh, maybe this is a question for Tyler. How do the host, park host deal with like insurance, their driver's license, D M V, if they don't have another physical address?
They would get a P O box, where they get mail is not our problem.
I realize that, but I think you might have a physical address.
Why can't we use the?
But that's not our problem.
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't be, like, City Hall, or, yeah, 'cause they can't write it, like, on a driver's license, or can't you do a P O box?
That would be there. That, in, in my opinion, totally out, outside the purview of our.
Is there an address?
I don't care what address they use, that's a primary, what they list.
So this isn't their, isn't necessarily their primary residence.
Sounds like it would be, or?
For what purpose are you, what do you mean?
For legal documents.
Legal documents.
I just.
I've always had it.
They could list the park address as their primary address.
Would there be an address? There is an address, okay.
I think something, uh, how it will be.
False. False, and last, three point two, is there, um, we talked about time commitment, is there a maximum length of absence that we would require?
I mean, if they wanted to be gone three months, we don't want that, or they'll be out two weeks?
It says no later than seven days. Oh, no, wait, sorry.
They have to inform us, but I think that we, that it's so that if we find that they're absent frequently, that we have the ability to say, you're absent too frequently.
Okay, so we don't want to set.
But we did not set a specific.
Okay.
Maximum.
Okay, Liz.
Um, Tyler, this is an excellent, excellent document. The only thing that I thought should be added is, uh, um, a ti- a timeframe to reevaluate the host, or the city to reevaluate, like, how it's going, like, it, it doesn't say a timeframe, how long a host would be at the park, right?
Well, um.
I mean, they can't move it if either for fifty years.
Well, on, on five dot three, it says, the agreement shall be effective through blank twenty twenty-four through blank twenty twenty-five, so I'd assume.
Oh, it is a year.
So higher, so.
Six, six month terms is what I propose.
Okay.
Oh, six months, okay.
Oh, we're down there.
So that, there would be an evaluation process at that point with the city, to say how things.
The council chose to undertake an evaluation process, yes.
What if, well, then how would it, how would it, how would that happen if the council didn't, because it said agreements are six month terms, so, could the cities say, no, we, the next term, we don't want to do this?
Again, we can fire this person at any time.
Well, I understand the termination process, but what about an evalu- what about a process with, for both parties, to say, hey, it's going well, or maybe you should work on this, and the, you know, at the park more?
Like a performance review?
With it, that either party may unilaterally terminate this agreement. That's with, or without.
I'm not talking about termination, I'm talking about, let's say Public Works is noticing some things that the host should be doing, and so how, yeah, that's in there, but, so we're not gonna build in an evaluation process with the host.
I think that Heidi was, oh, yeah, yeah, Heidi, go ahead.
I would just say that's what part of my job is, and so I imagine City Hall will get, or, uh, Public Works Office will get the feedback that's necessary if there's an issue on the park host. And we can evaluate that at that time, otherwise, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have pretty close eyes on the person too, because there's still lots of interaction that has to happen with the public work staff, like even picking up the garbage and taking it out, so. I think it'll, I learned I tried to build the, the, what was I saying, this agreement to allow the city to have, um, because this is, this is new, right? This is new territory, and so we really wanted to be able to have the ability to say, even if this isn't working at any point, so that becomes necessary for us. But we don't have a, a formal, like, evaluation, it kind of feels like it's a day, they've been evaluated by the general public, they can use their.
All right.
Okay, I mean.
Is there a provision in here that, uh, or, or, or anything about the use of alcohol in substances by the host?
Yeah, on page twenty-eight.
All right.
Host expectations, number three, towards the bottom of the page.
While on duty, so they can relax after hours.
Yeah, what would?
At the bottom.
Does it, does it state?
If it's not state, it would act as duty.
Oh, I'm on page twenty-eight.
They're kind of all the way along.
At the bottom three.
Got it.
Thank you.
Like if the park is open, that's active duty in my head.
Okay.
I only have one more question.
Okay.
So it says no vehicle lateness at your site. What if they need to change their oil?
Terry's tires.
Oh, they go somewhere else, okay, all right.
Ian, do you have anything else?
They usually leave that alone.
No, sorry.
You did, Jim?
I understand why you're there, and it's a, you're listed what they're gonna do, um, it seems like since we're providing it, or they're, we're providing them the electricity and water and sewer, that we expect them to be there at night when the most potential for vandalism is going to occur.
It says that in here.
That's a, yes.
It says weekends and evenings, right? Doesn't that, I.
I didn't remember seeing it.
Yes, we can.
I thought I read.
If I was ever there, then it must be there.
Yeah. It is, yeah, three one.
Okay, thank you, there you go. Okay, any other questions?
I think it's a good, it's a good document, it's a good document.
Oh, do you wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion, the council set resolution twenty twenty-four dash T, resolution adopting a park host agreement as granted. I second it.
Great discussion, Ian, you got something?
Does this cost the city money? For instance, what if this person injures themselves and sues us?
They will be covered by the city's workers' compensation insurance as a volunteer.
As a volunteer.
As a volunteer.
Thank you.
Okay.
It kind of does cost though, like, if you look at, nothing is free, right, so like the electricity, you know?
Uh, yeah, I, I particularly meant, I guess, I was thinking money out of, like, cash money, that we're paying for, um, this guy to, to be there. I understand, obviously, we're offering them something, which is the free power, the ability to live there, and whatnot, and we're giving something out of it. Because I meant more about, is there any other hidden costs that was not, that maybe we hadn't thought of, like, insurances, but obviously.
All right, well, Jim's gonna guess, um, do they have a, or will they have a maximum of the amount of electricity and or water that they use? That's what the city, that's the cost of the city is providing them, the facility, and if you just, I say, if they turn your sink on and just leave it on twenty-four seven, it's costing us money. And then if they leave a light on on top of it, make sure they can see the water that's running twenty-four seven, the city's bank account too. So are there any, any expectation or way we can cap their usage, so that they can't just be exploited in the city, because they can't. It's like, I'm the, I'm the host out there, and I can run the water all the time, and electricity, it's great. Is there a way to, to cap that, so that it could go beyond a certain amount?
I think that could be a height.
It is limited to a reasonable amount from the city's discretion.
There we go, I like that.
I, I will let, let you all know that I drafted this contract with the city's interest in mind, not the park host's.
So, well, I have one more question. So are you gonna put it in the bulletin that we're seeking a host, and then they will apply for the position?
When it's time, we're not quite ready. We haven't, we don't have the path for, we don't have, we've got some work to do before it's ready. But people are excited, and yes, we'll advertise for it. I'm excited to, to have that extra security out there, so, yes, thank you for supporting, it'll mean a lot to the public works.
Oh, we're not voting yet.
Do we wanna vote? Any other discussions?
Oh, it might have. Uh, is fireworn covered in your title?
I actually don't know that we are, but they should be.
Uh, 'cause, yeah, but if, you know.
Oh, that's okay.
If I was a host, I'd probably want to have some sort of armor, unless I was hoping to just, like, can't.
Maybe it's good if I under them.
Or, well, it should be.
Well, it doesn't say any one way or the other, it's leaving it to them.
I'm just, I just thought I'd ask if, uh, firewars were going to be allowed approved or not?
Not.
If what?
If I was.
Oh, yeah, Jim was asking if there's anything in here that said one way or the other, but it sounds like there's nothing in there that mentions firearms.
Yeah, that.
Go ahead, what was your question?
Yeah, you're sorry, that threw me off.
Sorry.
At the host's discretion that they won't have a firearm for their protection. I, I wouldn't wanna be out in the middle of nowhere without my gun, and I'm not gonna be out in the middle of nowhere without that, so.
That's what I was thinking. That's why I was thinking maybe.
Oh, man.
Or, or maybe we don't even need, I don't know. Yeah, just leave it unsaid, it doesn't need to be in there at all. Ian, go ahead.
Uh, the, just, just one thing to, that I think the council might wanna consider is, now, if we do approve this, which it sounds like we probably are, uh, the, um, there, there is a possibility to put in cameras then, that could be potentially monitored, uh, for instance, I have purchased cameras myself several times, that are not connected to the internet at all, and they just go to a D V R recorder, and I believe that, um, as Danny and I have actually toured the site before together, and we were looking at the edge of the camp from the prison there, and I actually spoke to the sortermister from the prison, who's like their SWAT team, and he's a, he's a personal friend, right, but the, he, he was talking about how the contraband that comes in through the fence there, and there's a variety of things that could happen in the future, but I, I would say that, since we do have a park host, maybe we could set up some sort of D V R, so that in the future, or, you know, these things record for a couple of days, and so then in the future, if there is something that happens, we can say, yeah, we do have video of all the vehicles that came in that day, warden, here you go.
Cause that's, that's like a closed circuit run, or?
Yeah, it's closed circuit, okay. They ran for it from the cost.
Loirex.
Well, no, Trunk Ham is just a, a sim card kind of a thing.
The old school ones.
You can get irregular D V R.
Old school ones. It's hardwired.
Back in the day.
It would just need power, then it would get.
Just power.
And a B H S tape to report.
I don't think you even need that.
Sim card.
So we will definitely work with the F D I.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe they.
I need a favor.
Well.
We get.
Um, anything else before we, well, before the council votes? Is that probably, we'll get a vote in this. Uh, all right, uh, all in favor? Okay, that's the end of this. Yeah, I don't have to vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a good job.
Okay, so, that's it for new business then, um, uh, second comment period isn't on here, but I'll go ahead and just add it, if anybody wants to comment. Hey, Joe.
Hi, I'm, um, um.
Hold on one second, just, Yvonne, should I read the?
Go ahead.
I don't need to, I don't need to read the thing. I think Joe knows.
I know, I know, I'll be less than three minutes, I promise.
So, just for pressure.
Oh, next, yeah, yeah, I'll comment on this.
Yeah, and I'll fill it out too. Uh, refresher, I do have all the task force things on my YouTube channel, and I do zoom in on the, um, paper that is written on the wall, so if anyone wants to know what was written on that wall, on the, on the paper here, it is there for everyone to watch.
To be able to get the information needed, so that way when Nick does that, you know, comes back and does the presentation and all that kind of stuff,
to conclude what task force, uh, accomplished, you have more information in your portfolio, that's all for you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, now, mayor and council, Lucy, do you want to go first?
Well, um, I was down at the end of Sheraton Road, dumping off some landscaping stuff, compost, I gave it wood, and, um, I saw these two people down there, and they were over by the metal container, and they were actually lifting and shoving, um, washing machines, uh, up into the containers, and it was kind of stored along the bottom, and so, you know, I went over there, I hate this, what are you doing, I said, I'm gonna. And, um, I went over there and talked to them. And I went over there and talked to them and they go down there two or three times a week and all the appliances that people don't put in the containers and including debris when they miss it and the whole mattresses out of, you know, the rubbish and they'll stack it in the corner with plastic and they, they fold up the cardboard and I said, how often do you do this? And they said, you know, maybe two or three times a week, maybe even more. And I said, you know, like, why do you do that? And they said, because it needs to be done. And we kind of monitored people down here. And then they take, there's a junk that's not even, shouldn't be there and they put it in a corner for the city. And I asked them what their names was, were, and this one's for you and this one's for Heidi. And I said, you know, that's very, I want you to do that for the city and be a caretaker. Because they said, well, you know, we want the people who share it to be able to use this facility. We know some people who abuse the internet rights and we don't want it to be hurt for the rest of the community. And I can't remember everything that they said that they do. They go to other places to pick up trash. So I wanted you guys to know, the council, and their names are.
Leanna.
I can't pronounce the last name.
Austin Black.
And I told them that I was going to bring it down here because I think as a council, these are kind of like little guardians for our rubbish. And I think it would be nice if we either, and which is why I've got your address, send them a thank you and have us sign it and or maybe even give them a gift certificate and thank them for being, you know, patrons for the city so that the other people in town are able to do that. Because they know that, I said, well, we did put in a second camera. And she goes, I know. She goes, we've seen people come down here and they'll kind of mark at them. And if they happen to see them there and, but that's why that place looks so clean down there. And I mean, that's some heavy haul and they're not that big. The people aren't. I mean, the guy's younger. He was in his forties, maybe. But I just was, I was very impressed by their volunteering and to help the city out, take care of that so other people in our community can continue to use them.
Thank you. We've never had their names before, but we know of them. Public Works Sewer Department is very grateful to them, so they will want to sign it.
And actually, because they go down there so often, they thought of ideas that might be able to help the city keep better accountability. And they kind of shared a couple. And I said, well, you know, you should share that with the city. I bet some of them would work, but some of them might. Because how often do you have somebody that just focuses on one area that everybody uses and volunteers? And they're trying to think of a way to make, you know, I won't use the word security, well, actually I will, to make it safer for, you know, the people who try to violate their use. And they've been doing this for quite a while, which I was very impressed with the whole conversation that I had with them.
Yeah, all of them. Well, that sounds like kind of going to, it's in the cartoon. Cause you wanna add something?
Yeah, this is on the subject of the recycle center and I think it's very exciting news. We have been working with recology and they had to complete this, what is it called? This is like a recycle questionnaire essentially because there's all these changes coming very soon with recycling. So much more of it is gonna be put back onto the manufacturer to figure out how to recycle their products that they produce, right? So the packaging. And packaging really. Anyways, and because we've had our recycle center up and running and we've offered more stuff out there and it's been going fairly well. Um, we are eligible, well, not eligible, we are in the running, I guess you would so to speak, to have it become a staffed recycle center. So no city staff, like recology staff. And all of that is also paid for by however this new stuff is working with the, with the manufacturers having to do the recycling part of it. But it's really exciting because there's things that could be recycled down there like buckets or like the green canisters from camping, you know, the propane things and lids and styrofoam and other types of plastics. Anyway, so I think it's very exciting for us to think about the possibilities of having that become staffed and be like such a resource for so many people, not just in Sheridan, you know, but outside, like going to Willamina, New Grand Run. And I just love that. I think they would have come with some site improvements overall for it. So hopefully we can provide that service.
So if it is staffed by recology, does that mean people from outside Sheridan? Isn't it technically just for, I mean, I don't know how you would enforce that, but technically only for Sheridan residents down there, but if it was recology and it's staffed by them, it could be anybody.
Yeah, and I don't exactly know how that even works if you have to have like the, you know, the one in Matthew should have the little cart or whatever to get in. And I don't know, um, I don't know how that detail would work. I don't know. I, I kind of think that the way that I understood it is that it has to be open to everybody regardless because the real driver here is the producers paying for recycling, like taking that back and figuring out how to reuse it. So I don't know that detail yet, but I just really want to continue to push for rest of the select as a site.
And I'll say another compliment to that center, the fifty-five and older part. They have people that go and pick up the debris and they even can tell you when I had a stuff in the back of my truck debris and, um, we'll deal credit. And they said, oh, it's full, but it'll be down tomorrow at ten o'clock and it'll be empty. So that's a compliment to the city that people are really using that especially our seniors, of course, I am a senior, but. Yeah, I'm using it too. But I mean, and they have those times memorized and they're telling their friends. So I think that's a very great compliment to the city also that we are helping our communities out.
So that does bring up another point, which is last time we heard recology speak, they wanted feedback from the city council. If you wanted to have a conversation with them about curbside glass and curbside yard debris with Willamina. Do you, yeah.
Will glass was.
Do you, I will leave it up to the mayor to schedule that for a work session, but don't forget, if you're interested, contact him here.
Yeah. It's, it's not for glass because we have glass going there.
Um, I, the curbside.
Oh, curbside.
So, yeah, and from what it sounds like, yard debris is a lot more popular to get added than glass. It sounds like the last city recology in their presentation, I forget which city it was, but they did offer glass and not many, and not many people used it. Didn't subscribe or, yeah, but when they added yard debris, it was, it was awesome.
Yeah, that would be great. So do you want to organize that there?
Yeah. Great. Uh, Rocky?
Thinking back to on what Heidi started to talk about, there are a lot of, um, well, this is coming through DEQ starting January first, mattresses when they're sold by the manufacturer, they're collecting extra money and they'll be setting up collections places in the future so you can return them somewhere for free. So that is, mattresses are huge, believe me. Storage units, I know. So having a place, and if this could be one that recology sets up, could be a part of that, that would be huge because we have all seen them sitting by the side of the road.
Actually, they're down at the end of the street motion. Those people picked them out and put them against the corner there.
Yep. So that's, it's a stewardship program they've started and I think there are other materials too that are in the process. I just know this one is for sure gonna start on January first.
Listen, Jeff, anything?
It was more a personal comment. It's really hard to pu- to push your debris into those dumpsters. They're so tall. And I asked Public Works if they could make a platform, but if we have curbside pickup, that's a non-issue. But it really is hard to, for me to stand up and do it. I try to get my van as close as possible to stand as a van to get over it.
Yeah, sometimes if it's not super cool, you can't open it, but if that can be.
I don't think I would open it. I'm a senior, remember?
Uh, okay, any other thing?
Couple things. Uh, yes, Sunday, yes, yesterday I watched a drug deal come down behind American Market between there and the library. So if you would come down the parking lot of American Market and go where their can deposits are.
Oh.
You keep on going down the aisle, alley, alley, there was just a few feet and there's a container there sitting on the ground. So they came out of American Market, went around the container, between the container and the dumpster, did the drug deal and boy, they took off like rabbits. I called it in, but, you know. You know, I described to people and all that. One of them I know is a local, been around for a long time. So my question is, why isn't, I, I didn't see a camera at the back of the library that would pick up that site between the container, the container area.
And I would just recommend that we don't talk about any security or that stuff in open session, but I'm sure that the city manager would.
Okay.
Be eager to talk to you.
Thank you. The other one I have is we got Heidi's email here just before the meeting and about the credit card and stuff. So I would like to put that on the agenda for next meeting. If you all recall, April of twenty twenty-three, I'm not sure which meeting, the council kind of came to an agreement that we should buy local everything we can. And it happened for a while, but it's not happening now. Which is, Amazon's a wonderful thing. I use it. But I try to buy local as I can if it's within reason. There's all sorts of things that a few small businesses here can supply, including the drugstore with office supplies. And, uh, oh, there's a lot of stuff that could be bought globally within fifteen percent markup that we talked about. Just let that slide. So I'd like to get that back on the agenda and discuss that some more to see whether we can support our home, the few we have left businesses, and they're getting fewer, so.
Does that include Will State? Never mind.
Okay, uh, I think Ian was next.
Some of you know that I solicit questions from people online and I got one question, one person asking for drug deals to be looked at in the city. Just one person saying that. I actually got four different people asking us to address the quality of the water. That was not solicited.
It's because they're on the river anymore?
No, the quality of drinking water, sorry. The, not the, not the actual water river. I don't know if that was clear or not, sorry. Uh, and then the final thing was. Um, not important.
Guess what I'm bringing up? Morton Street House. What are we doing about it? Mayor, council.
Let's put it on the agenda.
Please, let's, because it's an eyesore. And if we have code enforcement going after people, they should come after us.
I thought there was a motion to burn it, was there not?
I thought that, but then we talked about boarding it up and I said, why are we gonna board up the windows if we're gonna burn it? So are we gonna burn it this fall?
I know one of the, one of the pauses was because it was burn season, so we could burn it. But we, I'm, uh, yeah, I'd like to, yeah, talk about one or both or the whole thing. Cause I did bring up, you know, the possibilities that we could do with that space. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of options we, we could do if we wanna explore that. Ian?
I agree with you. Cause I'm kicking this around for over two years. This is ridiculous. They're both blind. They're eyesores. They cause people in the neighborhood to lose property. So we need to deal with it. Let's get going and see what we're gonna do. Let's get it done. They're kicking us down the street. That's what happens. That's government. We gotta deal with it.
I think it would be nice if each of you could make contact with Kale, whether it's an email or what, so that we can put together a consensus of where people's thoughts are on that. Because you've got two years to think about it and I know that people have had all different kinds of ideas. And I think Kale really could benefit from having that feedback, like what do you see with that? Cause I admit with each of you, different times individually, we're talking about this shit, but we, you've all shared with me a vision about that area. And I think that that needs to somehow be consolidated in some written form instead of just continuously talking about it in the council meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I like to, um.
Write down forward.
Yeah, off about, look at it, read it.
See where everybody's at.
Cause I would like to do something and have a decision and then we're done and move on. And I know there's a lot of possibilities, so it would be great if everybody could email me their, their thoughts.
I think she's correct. You know, and it's like Nick is saying, remember to be direct, right? So think about the entire property, the entire space, I should say, all forward that you want.
I think that'd be.
If you have a couple of minutes, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions.
Uh, okay, any others, any other? I was gonna say real quick, um, somebody, well, somebody, uh, two, two different Fridays came in and talked about camping and then, um, RVs. So I was just gonna, I checked with Tyler, so I think I have my info right. Just as I guess a refresher for everybody that it is, um, you can't camp in the city limits, right? There's no camping. And then you can't live in an RV in the city limits as well, right? You can't be on the, on the curb, on the street. Is that right?
The specific camping ordinance that we revised last year doesn't cover one hundred percent of the property within the city.
Okay.
It covers.
So if somebody does see, if somebody does see somebody camping, they can call it, essentially call YCOM and they can let the city know it, whether it's in a tent or RV. Cause that's not, neither is allowed in the city limits, so. They can call YCOM, they can call here and they can let me know too, if they see anything like that, so.
I think this keeps bringing back the same conversation that I've been having also with community members, which is the importance of people calling YCOM or calling nine one one. We are all a part of a, we are all a part of the city and the city can't be everywhere, you know, there's twenty-two of us, right? And so the more that we have you guys and people online and everybody working together, the better, the, the better it is. It really is. And I see Denny sitting over here with some pictures, so I'm excited to get those. It, it does, it makes, it does, it makes it much easier to have that communication. So we do appreciate it. We appreciate the help very much. And people need to remember, like when there's drug deals and stuff like Denny did, that was great that you called that in. How many people take the time to do that?
So I guess you can't, I, I called a non-urgent member. Of course, the dispatcher's gonna ask you all sorts of questions. You think they're, you know, under influence? Well, I don't know. They aren't now, they will be soon. So you, you gotta be patient with the dispatcher. They have a a way, they have a protocol that they have to go by, so you go, no, God, you don't care. Well, no. They have to do what they have to do. And I know that because I lived with a lady who was a dispatcher for seven years, Alaska State Troopers. So there's a protocol and, and so don't get discouraged that they don't care or, you know, there's not a sheriff within twenty miles, they're gonna catch them. That's okay. Give them the description of what you see, the person, you know. You know, if the guy with no sleeves on his shirt and tattoos everywhere and he's riding a bicycle and I see him quite frightened. So you.
And it's a girl's pink bike.
Oh, this is different.
I saw that.
But anyway, just, yeah, a couple of years you see it and it's, I've seen a lot of drug deals go down in my time and it, you know, it's obvious what's going on. They have to have certain criteria to do anything. And then again, by the time they get there, usually they're gone, but they know they're in the area and they'll keep an eye out for them. Eventually they'll probably bump into them and have a little chat, see what's going on. So anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, so I was giving this, I, I just got it from Willamina because Willamina did take fluoride out of their water. And this is documentation that proved the reasons why it wasn't safe, the people to be drinking it. I might be just being a little bit too cutting around there. But I would like to see this on one of our workshops to start investigating taking the fluoride, having a discussion about fluoride in the city water. And this, I have to get it back to her, but I could leave this for somebody if they wanted to kind of look through this or I have to kind of keep it with the yellow bow. But it's pretty big and it's pretty full, but it has a lot of information instead of digging through all this internet stuff. Cause they've already done it and they passed it, so.
They, they passed it, is in the council passed it or was it the city?
Yes.
Okay, council passed it.
It's in, it's in a code here.
And I've had people send me little emails with documentation, but this is all in here. It's a little data, but they used it from back when they did theirs. And it was, I asked her about it and so she brought it to me the other day. That was very helpful, very helpful. We could put that on the workshop instead of a regular council. We could put that on the workshop instead of a regular council meeting, just to start looking into that as an option for our, our water.
Ian?
Uh, since we're all sitting here and allowed to talk about stuff, uh, Kim, can you give us a quick update on what, because I think we're touring Stony Mountain on, or potentially touring Stony Mountain.
We are.
Coming up, okay. And then we had talked about maybe getting opportunity to tour the other water facilities in the city.
Yeah.
Get eyes on.
The other facilities, I haven't got that scheduled yet, but Stony Mountain is happening, yeah, August fourteenth.
Do you want to meet here?
Yeah.
Okay.
August fifteenth is type of thing. Never mind.
Yeah, August fourteenth.
Yeah, August fourteenth at eleven.
I think I have it in my.
I will meet here. But, but yeah, I'll, I'll figure out, is there a certain date that works better for people or just the general, um, facilities? For probably generally more hours, well.
Is that what we're doing? Both the tour and Stony Mountain?
No, Stony Mountain is its own thing.
Okay.
Well, I, I need to schedule, um, well, for all the facilities really, but I'm just curious what days would work good for, for certain.
We, we've done facility tours, like, um, we've done pre-coun- uh, couns- pre-council meeting, that's how typically done in the past. Just in case you're thinking, you know, a whole other day, it can be on the day of the council meeting. So we just posted that, you know, they're, they're going on a tour and slated it like an hour before.
An hour, okay. Oh, yeah, I was going to ask if you felt like an hour or two hours ahead of time would be enough.
All right, I think it was made, was it about an hour and a half, Jim? Do you think? Did we think about an hour and a half?
I don't know. I just remember I was filling the audience last time that happened.
Oh, okay.
It was you, Ken, and I sit here while the rest of the council left.
Yeah, I, I, because we were at Monroe Event Center then and so was, or were we here?
We were here.
Anyway, we, it, they usually did it an hour, an hour and a half and, um, and then we came back and started the meeting.
And they, they were able to see all the facilities?
They did, uh, one facility at a time. So pre-one meeting, they did the water treatment plant. And we arranged for staff to just shift their schedules so they came in an hour or so later that day and stayed an hour or so later. So that way they were there to do the tour and then the next time they did the super treatment.
Yeah, I can talk to Gary as to what he thinks. If he thought we could do more than one, because I don't know, that's, it's a lot of facilities to do, but.
It just depends on the questions people ask.
Okay.
The only way we won't have Stony Mountain is if there's a red flag warning for.
Uh, heat?
Yeah. And wind because we can't, we can't go with.
But looking at the temperatures, it looks like it might be eighties, so hopefully not a hundred. It might be okay, but we'll see.
I think we'll be okay. I just don't want anybody to be caught off guard, surprised.
Yeah. Okay, but yeah, I'll work. I'll get that scheduled. Okay, Dave?
I think we should adjourn now.
Okay. Okay. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we're adjourned. It is nine oh one.